Father, we thank you for this day. God said it's the day that you've made and we rejoice and are glad in it. And in our rejoice and our gladness, we are thankful with greatness. We enjoy citizens of this country. Father, we ask you to give us leaders in public service who appreciate that freedom, cherish that freedom, who vouch for that freedom. Father, we ask for your blessing on this gathering of nine. Let it be peaceful harmonious, let it be for the good of the city of Peachtree City and all of its citizens. We thank you for the Rotary Club for putting it together. And we just ask you to bless us all so that we can be blessed and so that we might bless others in due time.
Make standing for the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance is to the Father. And for the retirees in the room, the holy test of the day we thank Savior first is deserved. Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned on your decision?
This is not easy. In their chairs, these are our neighbors who decided that they would step up, that they would get involved, that they would reach out and listen to Peachtree City and Urban Center. After that, they even all get the peace coming from their hands. First of all, like most cities in the state of Georgia, Peachtree City has our own city manager or any Peachtree city, that means one mayor or council members who serve as the city manager. You are tasked with making the decisions, setting priorities, and then giving those directives to the member whose job it is to not only run the operations of the city, but to carry out those household directives. Municipal elections in the state of Georgia are often nonpartisan. You will not see any office parties on the ballot when you vote at home. And what that means is that we just have a lot to create and make this best for our community. And our halls don't care, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, just for you. Unlike this in the states of the state of Georgia, Peachtree City has term limits. The council member or a mayor can run and serve about two consecutive four-year terms. And then they're done after eight years of a certain season, a certain term limit. So that helps us to explain on behalf of open seats in both form and those two. And that brings me to my next point in Peachtree City, our elections. As I know, you have multiple streams for boundaries, our elections. In other words, when you go to vote, you can choose to vote for your choice of candidate and host one or any of those. We're all pretty much just given in those two. This council city manager or government is very effective in widespread because it equals the elections, our six separately from the state's operations. City council is very, very, very sharp. We've welcomed Bob Kurnow, our new city manager, January this year. He came to us from Arkansas for that. He brings over thirty years of municipal experience and a wealth of energy and ideas. So what I see going forward is very positive, I think, with boss management and with two new team members of city council. And see us moving forward, I'm so very excited, the initiative, our Peachtree City, my part of the strategic plan, I can watch the traffic solutions, only recreation master plan. I anticipate improvements in our buildings and improved communities and some citizen engagement. That was the one. Like you, I want to hear what you think. And the final thought, we owe it in a grand sum to the Rotary Club of Peachtree City. I think probably, like many, most of us have come to attend on the Rotary Club to bring us this wonderful opportunity to hear from the candidates before we go to the polls. There's a lot of coordination and a lot of behind-the-scenes seminars. Rotary Club is a huge. But we should be doing different to pay in that like that only we get to hear from the candidates themselves. But this is how we combat misinformation. This is how we protect, boost, and this is about nine to our support of the democratic process that we respect and cherish so very much. Election day is November seventh. Early voting at Peachtree City Library starts October 17th. Voting in local elections is more important than in government. So we should all take our passion for Peachtree City to the polls. Thank you, have a great evening.
The Rotary Club of Peachtree City started in nineteen sixty-seven. And so for the past fifty-six years, we have faithfully served our community. Tens of thousands of volunteer hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been put into this community by your Rotary Club. If you'd like to know more about the Rotary Club, learn more about our sports for lunch, we meet every Thursday at twelve noon up in the loft in Deuce House. We locate VRGS, Rapper Road Dranks, and now we come. And you can come to VRGS to see what we're all about. We do that every Thursday. And one way you can tell us impact the community, there's flyers on the table with the clubs. Bourbon and Botoy Casino and Burrows. There's a fundraising event we're gonna have on October, on Thursday, November second. Like I understand we are going to invite it to something, a first-class event out of Toronto. And so allow y'all to help us support and make an impact right here at the beginning. Okay, if you're ready, before we can start this again in form, it's out of the base. All right, we have our candidates, this is Buzz One, Eric Hunter, Laura, Bobby Kennedy Thompson, Megan DeRide, Cameron Allen Report. This is between us the day for this event, we selected today based on a video we saw on YouTube before. Early building started, did not stay, and I have two days to meet. Uh, our songs from Perry Hunter, he involved us, he could not be here tonight, he's out of the country. A big fan of ours, so we're sorry that the music keeper did not come. Our candidates for post two, Suzanne Brown and Big Panther. Once again, like the mayor said, thank you so much for stepping down. I have a series of questions. I'll ask them again next time, I'll have an opportunity to respond. Most of the questions, you'll have two minutes. If you have any questions, most questions, you have three minutes. You'll get a thirty-second notice from our type here. And then I'll pull up the timeline when it's happening, you can write what you thought. Yeah, I'm gonna lie, I missed another one to finish your sentence. I think that was a little bit rare. So finish your thought. Questions were randomly selected, so each question will be answered in a different order. I think you got these orders to be answering the questions. Then at the end of the evening, we can, we'll begin in three minutes. We're not gonna be taking questions from the audience. If you have questions for the candidates afterwards, they're gonna be out on the table and you can ask them all the questions that you like. Y'all enter your thoughts going into the next few minutes, this will be fine. All right, when they give any frank only comments, you can do all the questions like, nothing too mad on them. Right? And so those are the rules, that's how we're gonna be starting. Question, if you, this will serve as a hopefully knowledge for you. We just want to get a little bit about you. How long you lived in Peachtree City? And what has spurred your desire to run for city council now? Why, why you, why now? All right, so that's a simple question. You have three minutes and we'll start with this guy.
Thank you. Well, first off, I want to thank the Peachtree City Rotary Club for hosting this forum. All four of us to give you the seat. For those of you who have had, I'm Big Panther, forty-five years old. My husband and my beautiful wife Sarah, who I saw just walk in from soccer practice, and an eight-year-old daughter, Sadie. I'm a Christian, I'm a part-time soccer coach. Look at my upbringing, I was raised in Royal Virginia. My dad was a carpenter. My mom's secretary for social services in the county that I grew up in. Grew up very blue collar. Put myself through college on a partial baseball scholarship, partial academic scholarship. Graduated, got into commercial banking. I also want to give my mother, who's watching this or watched later, both my mom and dad, my college was never the mid-forties. I'm really proud of that. I'm really proud of my blue collar upbringing. I wear those badge behind. In my personal life, I'm a senior vice president at Wells Fargo. And I lead one of those commercial banking teams in the state of Georgia. I'm gonna get something, something that may vary with your emergency. I do business, my team does business, small businesses. I do not do business with developers. I would never do that kind of money because it's boring. I like to reap balance, yes, it needs us. Do business with small business owners. And at the end of the night, I've had two customers approach me and say, hey, Big, we need a testimony on your back. There's a company in town, Point Integrity Fusion, a hundred and thirty-five employees. A company part of packaging, a hundred and fifteen employees. So again, I'm gonna be very clear, I have zero relationship with developers. And my job is to help small businesses grow and thrive. My team supports the management factory industry, distribution industry, and healthcare practices. For the last twenty-three years on my career, I've been focused on helping small businesses and entrepreneurs find solutions to help them grow and thrive. As a result of my relationship with these companies, I've been fortunate to play a role in creating jobs in the state of Georgia and more importantly, in Peachtree City. With my background in finance, I know, I know how we consume money to invest in city services that are for all of us. I didn't come to run Peachtree City lightly. Right in the midst of the street, there's been so much to be in my pathway. Firmly believing in Peachtree City, thriving and accepting the way life is on our willingness to settle.
My name is Suzanne Marie, and I'm from Georgia. And I'm a passionate, you know, liberal movement area. I think the movie here begins where Forteville, that's where I grew up, in the environment. I went off to Florida University and got a bachelor of science degree here, Colorado State, and got a master of science degree at Colorado State. I ended up getting married and two kids have divorced, I don't have any more. From there, I ended up taking it and vowed prismism. So for twenty-one years, I vowed prismism and I retired in two thousand and four, the eighteen fifty. Could be incorrect. I moved to Florida and I lived in Florida happily for thirteen years. And then my daughter and son-in-law, three friends, come and she said, they visited this area, so I knew how beautiful it was. And I said, that's it, I'm selling my house, Florida, and moved to Georgia. And so I packed up and I moved here in Hyatt House in June of twenty nineteen, and I've been here ever since. COVID hit right after I got here, so I didn't meet too many people in the beginning. And they came, door not contributed to the twenty-fund election. And then after this, came Florida again, said, we want you to try. And so I joined the group, tried to slide, and came, what I've heard a bunch of city members. And I started going to all the communities. When I started getting stop talking, the board of commissioners, school board, city council, plate, and anything and everything, I started reporting back. When this level was going on, it was important to try to get people focused on what we had done. And through all of that, I really decided that the city council, I was because, and most of you, why I was in Peachtree City, that's a pretty big investment. So I wanted to make sure that I would protect my investment for the rest of my life. And so I really started focusing on the city council. And that's when I decided to run this team as, because it was very important. We have things that are our technical system. So here I am.
Hi. First of all, just to make everything clear, tonight, I think we're seeing this time and express my appreciation of that also. Because it's a critical election with two seats of reelection. So I'm very glad that we have involved citizens here tonight. My name is Laura Crochet-Jompson. I am ready to get to work for you. I am a mom, I am a wife, I have run a small business, and I'm excited to be a a fresh conservative voice for our city council. My family, we moved here in nineteen ninety-one when I was eleven years old. So I didn't post my growing up here in Peachtree City. Me and my husband, we have returned to Peachtree City and we were raised on a five-trip here during ages six to seventeen. We love Peachtree City. I love it so much. I feel like we live in the best country. I live in the best state and I live in the best city and state. I could not love Peachtree anymore. I am running to conserve the foundation. When we moved here, my family, we, we asked, I remember my mom asking, where's Aunt Peachtree today? Or was that mine? Something's gone, her castle of the opposite paper and the vice versa. For my family growing up and we still live for those same reasons for our family today. So I want to preserve those things that made Peachtree City great. And I believe that those are the things that will continue to make Peachtree City great every year, so and for ever. I have small children at home, well, small and older children at home, the school-aged children. I bring something to the city council that there isn't there already, and that is the family representation. And that is really a lot of why I'm, I want to to sign, whatever, it's always a good thing. And I want to make sure that their voices are heard. That's very important to me. And I just want you guys to know, one way you can remember me, by my green shirts and my bourbon sign. And that is because I do believe in the foundations and I want to keep Peachtree City green. And I, and I appreciate you. I look forward to answering some questions tonight. And if that way that we think Peachtree City.
Thank you. Just more.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Pastor Dylan for opening his home here. The retirees welcome already. I want to thank my friends and family that come. They've been so supportive. I saw my dad come in. My own candidates up here, it is amazing. I had a lot of time, I really had, it was time soon. My name is Tamara Allen Moore. I'm her first one, speaking council. I was moved here in nineteen seventy-two. My father worked at Air Traffic Control, so he did for a long time. And we moved here in nineteen seventy, so I have a long time here. Peachtree City, I went to school on today's city council, I graduated at MacIntosh. My children also, three same schools, didn't mind, start that, we just have happened. I'm graduating Harvard University. I have friends from Quest there, I'm just not in there for over thirty years. I'd like to say to the chalver I hold, I'm a daughter's prepared in the center of this year. And I have a son who is a fourth year at Georgia Tech. Schools that come here were incredibly, incredibly welcoming to them and their school readiness was something that I cannot really talk about up here, that they're ready for school. I'm running, who I'm running now. There's two open seats, and this is a perfect opportunity to define what's incredible, what's like. I want to thank Lila Tim, and Laura said, and maybe some of the others. The city council in its current form, there are two open seats and individuals are coming out there in the front. It doesn't reflect the impact of the graphics, Peachtree City, or I see this. Some citizens of Peachtree City, they all aspire, we have so many honorable cultural events here. And you know, the churches that we have, a long time ago, the founding members, all the church. That started in nineteen seventy-two in the warehouse. What I want to talk about, and hopefully I'll get a chance to do it later, is the five villages that I'm calling my five villages. Why? Because I listen. I want to make a citizen service to my community. I want to have positive conversations. And because I love this community that raised me. I really don't need, I really don't need money out of these for negative stuff. That's all right. I'm with all the candidates up here, um, one by one.
Our second question, uh, will be long. And from the city's roadside, I accept this. In their policymaking capacity, the city council is authorized to perform the following functions and lists out twelve or fifteen functions. The copy functions it lists are allocate taxes for everybody in Bay County and establish a military to the state of Peachtree City. The question to you, what will your process to allocate taxes, let be by Bay County and establish a military for Peachtree City? What will your process be and those two, all the comments, the city's entitled to.
Well, obviously, the first thing is that you have to bring enough taxes to operate the city. You also have to make sure there's a raise for extra things, but you don't need, or you don't need to. You want to defend, apparently, you tend to citizens, which is why the bill is to spend their money, citizens' money. They, you know, every government, we just spend one flag, every color, and yours takes money because they don't have money unless they take it from the citizens. So you want to make sure as a city that you are, that you can skirt out the public's money, not wasting anything. And I think you could see those really good job of that. I can see. A public hearing just two weeks ago about military, for Peachtree City. And trying to get them to hold it back just a little bit. Not a lot, not a full roll back, but not rolling back to the military, it meant that we all end up with bad manners. And of course, I want to value more than that. So everybody's gonna have so many. I pointed out, I showed at the public hearing that there are a lot of limited in constitutions it comes, or law it becomes. And that we need to be a little bit more, as you have to say, competitive in the politics of the media.
Thank you. This is John.
Yeah, it comes to the, it has a large part of the council, whatever they do. It is important to have a balanced budget and spend wisely and to save for what we're doing right now. We do have a budget sort of closet, just, I'm just saying. And then this is, this is your money, I don't have to pay. It's important for us to value that, and to be wise towards or, or the high end, it's the power of the justice. And I'm not afraid of spending money. I want to make sure that it's, as far as I'm being spend wisely, it will lift up the last and even visible for Peachtree City, for the city council. My other comes to the military, that is definitely something I do not thoroughly and be clear of all the population in Peachtree City, our retired community, most wish them a fit income and with health and contriving. Even if you don't break that military, their taxes increase. And though it's important to take that into account, how will they, how will they sort of, when the British authorize the higher, it's harder to make a need that we can go to, to account, how will they go have a staff that will protect the, um, help our, our, our kind of, that kind of, to, like, all of this. But that, that is what I stand that it is, is not the thing that I think I read and that can be very, um.
But it is a large part of what the city council members are asked to do. And I think that's a lot of time, really real to that, and it's very realistic. But I do know of cities is we have experts that work for our city. There's some really good people there, have great financial people. You have the city manager, Ms. Kim, said, and she has an open remarks. There's a system where the city manager drives across the, across the, across the median. He gets, he's doing months and months looking at the money and the budget costs. Then you see on city council, one round for ninety minutes. They've word shot it, the city council. They have open being, there's statements about it, all side on it, or not, I feel like the city council has tried the last few years, really communicating, putting out illustrations on what is going on, where we are. It's ninety percent of the seaside of those statistics. ninety percent of the seaside with those staffs. I don't know, I'm just like, I'm very, very, maybe, that a lot of my opponents is, for fifty here tonight, so it's my time for March. Um, I'm opposed to that, or Johnson, what do you got about it? You got Linda. Linda is what it takes to keep all our parents. And the bill in my case, last week, you got, isn't a minimum, it's a split up, no returns. But if you pay them, what do you mean? They raise it to the P S people. We carry them. And also, this is important, this is a one challenge. This one thing is, I can balance budget. Everybody up here says they can balance budget, you know, they can balance budget, I can balance budget, but also, the manager, the staff, that can balance budget. With input from the citizens. So I'm not going to say, I'm going, I would look into it. But also, you need to know that this is an affluent city. And our money is in those places, we expect it to be trapped there. Thank you.
If I had a magic wand, I would wave that, I would go back, yeah, really phrase. Um, I'm, I'm a conservative, um, and so, I'm, I'm kind of a hawk when it comes to that. One thing that I do about professional career, and one thing that we need to be, uh, here to be smart. So we're on the precipice of a, of a recession. Right, and so, I'm meeting with customers on your business, that we talk about that. You know, you have money in a rainy day fund to withstand some of the headwinds that are out the doorway. So I think the city should be prudent, should be judicious with this, uh, tax revenue. Be ready for it to look down. I would encourage everybody to go to Peachtree City, uh, website, Peachtree City website. There was, uh, a study posted, I believe in June, was actually really embarrassing. There are fireworks falling. Um, that's a chain for the taxes that we made here. Um, there's probably fifteen or twenty pictures of, of fireballs, of soccer fields, of baseball fields, of fences that need to be repaired. Quite frankly, it's embarrassing. Right, so, we, we need to be judicious about how we collect money, we need to be very, very smart about how we spend it. Um, the city council voted unanimously to, to increase the military. Um, you know, again, we, we need to be judicious with the citizen's money, uh, scattered on the table to present. Any, or, 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 or? What would your thought process? Probably, we can evaluate. A request for annexation to Peachtree City, what would your thought process be in that annexed request, uh, for you?
Yeah, so when it comes to annexation, there has better be a normal reason for it. Um, we, anything that crosses or makes, um, our topic first, I am going to be against. And before our city council is focusing on it, wiping our borders, more importantly, I think it's parts fix up and realize the things that are inside our city that need our attention. Like the vacant buildings, vacant law, uh, of vacant sign art. And, uh, beyond Tuesday morning, like State University, all of these businesses, all the vacancies are places where I really like our city council to focus and bring businesses here. We need to have a development economic climate that will bring in high paying jobs. And I want to see our city focus on that before we go via annexation and, um, and, and, and to, to answer a little bit as far as what do you do, maybe do cut the military, and that is to you bring in businesses, you bring in more corporations that helps to offset those cuts. So that you are able to alleviate some of that tax burden to your citizens, you want to broaden that bank, lower the rate. That is what we want to do, so that it's not that they burden on our citizens, we want to share that and bring in businesses, we have that time for speed and business for ownership. And so, like, counting annexation, there needs to be a very clear benefit to citizens. From that.
Thank you, this is.
First, I think, maybe just, the annexation is a complex, uh, uh, process that brings you to cities under the new areas. And a couple of my opponents talk about it in development. But then we're also now forbidden extremely tough on even listening, hearing, opening our hearts to people, listening to that. That's gonna be really difficult, and, um, that will change our game. We can close our minds on that. It's part of the city council's job to be a listener. We need to, we see, first of all, the annexation plan, the state, but the right now is a ten sign, and it is not. Annexation, right. Um, there's specific laws and requirements that we do have, but it needs to be all stood up. Need to be negotiations. They've done a good job of that in the past, I think they need to do better and expect getting better. Then you understand the needs and concerns and operations of the public needs and for us. Will be considered an impact that this might have on our city. There can be a good impact, but there are also some challenges, they all know that, and so we always need to hear about justice. A lot of people live in places now, and I'm talking in places that are abandoned and standard. I'm not saying I'm a forerunner, but as part of the city council, I want to be listening. I will be respectful to people that come into my home and ask for that. And I'll ask all of my questions, I will ask the citizens my questions. And I would see it as something good for us. We need to develop a comprehensive plan around it. That's what I was talking about. And if you work closely with your legal administration, and again, those C S R's, but you have to listen to them. We need to add a knowledge development here. If we aren't willing to open up the thought process to a greater reputation, testing, none, slippery slope, everything. To go forward, we have to be better.
We can, so there's been a tremendous amount of discussion recently about annexation, uh, as Tamara mentioned. Current annexation plan in November two thousand fourteen, running until two thousand twenty-four, so there is a senior goal. So I would report via part city council last year, helped develop the plan going forward. Um, we need to update that plan. Right, so as a general rule, I'm opposed to annexation. Um, unless it fits within the village concept, unless it's accretive to Peachtree City from a tax perspective, but as a general rule, I, I'm going to be pretty tough on it. Um, for someone that, you know, almost stays, actually worked for small businesses, moved small businesses, Peachtree City, or surrounding counties and cities, that's what I do best. So, right now, our tax base is eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial. It really speaks to seventy-five percent commercial, twenty-five percent residential. We need to have a renewed focus on supporting our existing industries here to help them expand. And we need to have a renewed focus, someone with some energy, some business acumen, some grit, that's willing to take action, get new businesses to move here. Thank you, this is.
Okay, there are three different types of property development, there's industrial, residential, and residential. When it comes to annexation, I am in all kinds of favor of industrial annexation. What we suffered from here in the past thirty years, cities, is that sequentially, city councils gave up land that was supposed to be set aside as general industrial property, and gave it up for residential development. Through Plan Terra, all the areas, all New Delhi. Just imagine how much industry could have here right now, first you got lots of the consequences, something you may have near by, I call it. But the issue is, we have industrial development, high paying jobs, and we do not have the same strength of the level that we have. The world ties it to it. If Plan Terra and New Delhi, built as industrial land, so we can have a reroute from around Peachtree City instead of, but this banner is not true, that the homeowners in Plan Terra are complaining about the track, from speeding through Plan Terra. We need more industrial land. From a tax perspective, industrial land brings in a high amount of property tax revenue that requires a lease amount of services to include, uh, lease, fire, maintenance, and heating. So having industrial, we should better have property tax revenue, high paying jobs, and is a, a load strain on your, less than your budget. So that's what we need to bring in, so that we have a whole farm, so we have to keep paying higher and higher. Need industrial, you have the mechanics doing, that's what we need to do.
Okay, honorator, we're going to, uh, fill all of this, which is important. Uh, so we have one minute and hence, you know, talk about, here, trying to evaluate Peachtree City government's planning mission. What's the role of the planning commission, the governor?
Yeah, so the planning commission in this is by, we see that, um, we're, who, who know all the facts about Peachtree City, and they, they listen, they just let them do the recent annexation, the, the the years over, I move, so it is, it is a vital role, the citizens can come and then they, they work together to, to suggest or, um, to, well, not, they, they give their suggestions to city council, so when it goes on, they can, they, you know, we think it's a good idea, or a bad idea. They're a great advice reading committee, and a great, um, important step in the process of annexation. I feel like things are, um, ever set, and, and so this is.
I wish I could a little bit about there is, having working days in the city, opening it up to a little bit more, free, and, uh, the planning commission is fine there. And I, but I would re, 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 the planning commission, I think does a good job of maybe building information, it goes to them first, sometimes. When something, uh, is brought to the city council, I need to get it back, it's the annexation uh, request that they had a few weeks ago, they put it back to the planning commission to look at it. But they consider the impact, they're the ones that do that first. They also need community engagement. They can ask questions of some of the developers, uh, communications, they do play a minor role in that. And it's something that I think we could sharpen, and they could help us make the annexation plan, that I think we should be going for, make it longer for us.
Okay, sure, we have, well, quickly to annexation, so here to the, uh, the, the, basis. We don't need to annexing commercial property, we have a true business property. We have some of the nicest industrial properties in Portland. We need to get those patents sold. So, listen, when we get those patents sold, then we'll talk about more commercial property. So that, that, I want to make that very, 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 we need a focus on those industrial properties that are already developed, from the commission, professionals. And some of the mad cats have, uh, very talented professionals. So I trust them to make their opinion, and the other day, they bring that recommendation to me. I'm not a member of the group thing, I'm a native in the theater, I'm a city, I'm a professional. The governor.
I agree that the planning commission is, experts, uh, they're very specifically represented by the city council owners. You can serve as their subject experts, whether it's from, uh, an architect or an engineer, et cetera. They bring a lot of information out that people on the city council are not experts in. So you have to rely on them, they are a very valuable part of the entire process. That would be said, you know, those, um, like the dynamics, and one of those, and these, really is under the perfect, uh, the if this is where it is, it's not going to come to see.
Maybe, for what's up, folks? Make some big sounds. Big sounds basically Peachtree City right now, and what would you do as a single councilperson? Who'd raise that challenge? This is.
The biggest challenge. I think the biggest challenge we see is, honestly, the reason why I'm running, is we're on the precipice. We have two open seats. And one of the reasons why I'm running is I saw an opportunity to define a successful asset that I'm with the negativity and the the chaotic rhetoric and, and some of the things I've been seeing is really, it's really bothering me. Peachtree City is a wonderful city, it is unique, and I know people know that. And there's this swirl that is happening that I want to stand in tight with. We need individuals on the council who have leadership skills and qualities. We have people that are on there, that are doing a great job, and it needs to be cast as other individuals. The graphics people are like the city, they need to have somebody that's on town and up there on the dais. These people not only, we talk to the citizens, they're not just there, I want to talk to them. We need to talk to the mayors of other counties, having that, hey, sometimes city council members are taxed for talking to departments, or going to the state. You have to look at individuals who have skills to do that, and have leadership qualities to do that. And I can learn the people that honestly reach across the aisle, talk to the other mayors, and open their lines of communication back up, be a positive change. Not align ourselves with individuals who want negative and only have a narrow line about one opportunity, it's about all the rostrates, I'm going to be a stakeholder in that.
Okay, so the biggest challenge I want to go back to is, was, uh, we need to slip the tax revenue base. More commercial, less residential. And right now, it's eighty, eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial. That's been part of the life city. No need more, need more commercial. Uh, no big challenge, obviously, the traffic, um, you've been here for all time, and Bridge City, down from there, and it's, go up here, it's a different fix it, that's just ridiculous. We need to work with the state of Georgia. That's what they own, how we said, they own how we do. We do not own the rules. We need to redevelop the relationship with the I that deteriorated. We need to establish a relationship with our neighbors. And we need to be hard to, to, to get that done. Um, so we need, the number one issue here with this traffic, or with this city council, is not that it's all we need to go to a relationship with others to have the ability to do that, uh, that's what I plan to do. Anytime, bro.
I'm sure some of you think that when it comes to having a specific issue, I'll go to chickens, but that's not going to be. Um, I agree, fun, um, idea that Peachtree City, just like a lot of other municipalities throughout the state of Florida, should operate and conduct their own municipal levels. You have the ability to do this, the law allows it, a lot of, um, cities, all reports on doing it. It opens up something that we haven't had in the past, and that is the ability to control the cost. Right now, when we look back at the social link last year, it's supposed to cost eighty thousand dollars, anyway, they gave it at a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. Spoke about it at city council, they negotiated bill, and got a debt of ninety-one thousand dollars. That was ninety-one thousand dollars for the special municipal election. That was ninety-one thousand dollars for the special municipal election, for people, et cetera. It is very extensive. They operated all four of early voting sites. It is very extensive. We have the ability to do municipal election, actually the cost. We need to do a cost feasibility study, we need to look at it, something that can be done. And many of the municipalities over Georgia are moving it, it was out of the clock. And this is definitely something that I think we need to work for. You can do this with paper ballots, your paper ballots, or Handmark, and have it have a measurement of the cost. There's no way that they should pay ninety or a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for municipal election.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I agree with all of what is being said, um, let's see, it's doing with traffic and development. But I would say, if I were to speak on one message that I can say I would love to see improved in Peachtree City, that would be for the citizens of this community, for like their people. I have those city council meetings or, I'm happy watching them. Um, and it's very timeline. And it is divided up between people. And so sometimes what you see is one person might speak for three minutes and then another track from that last person. They might be lost for thirty seconds. And as, as someone in this community, it kind of breaks my heart because they're trying to convey a message in very rushed time. And I would love to see our city council give that respect to each person as a member or see, I feel like their voice should be heard. That's part of why I'm, I'm wanting to be that president, I want to be that voice for every. I feel like everyone knows what food you eat. You can always learn something from every school. There is no industry where there cannot be anything that is something. I feel like I can learn from all of you. And so if I'm sitting on a council, every person that comes up has something valuable to say that I can feel it deserves to be heard. So I feel like we can form a value to each other and build on our similarities. So I'll focus on all the various extreme things that keep us, that are really so much harm that we have in common. And I feel like we can come together and have a home.
Ms. Brown, for a second, I'm confident now. How many do you know about the slice of life in Peachtree City? How many did you get that? If you're not all raising your hand, you're missing out. All right? The staff of Peachtree City does a great job of sending out an email. Your touch point's gone on the city. It tells you that, uh, uh, we've had eight hundred and twenty-five golf cart registrations. It gives you a snapshot of what's going on in the budget. So if you want to be an engaged citizen and you want to engage your mayor and your councilpeople, subscribe to Slice of Life in Peachtree City. There's a lot of great valuable information and I think the, uh, city staff has done a great job with their communications. So a little advertisement, you know, right, but that's easy, I don't have any questions. What are your thoughts on the city's communication efforts? And more specifically about the council, the city council meetings? How, how well is the city staff doing in that? And if you could change something about that, what would you change? Ms. Brown? Oh, sure. You know, talk about communication with the city council, how is the city doing communicating with the citizens? And specifically within the council, you know, the council meetings? Good and bad, what would you change if, if you had a recognition for changing how the council is communicating with the city?
Well, I'd just go to that.
And, uh, see, that's.
And I honestly, I truly have so much appreciation for our staff and for their in-person communication. We're getting through our whole job. I, I love the fact because, um, I can't always say it's a great city council meeting, but they do set a great job. And if you're at the council meetings, our mayor does an excellent job to make sure everything happens so quiet for those viewers at home. And sometimes that's me and I have so much appreciation for that. To make sure that it's quiet for the viewers at home and here. If you go on Facebook and there's a city that has a meeting that's going on and you're subscribed to the Peachtree City government, um, it's a, or a notification that automatically pops up that says there's a meeting or on the map. Sometimes it is possible this meeting, you have something will come up, I have to put that in. And I know when you go to subscribe on YouTube, you can go to YouTube and watch our live streams, um, later on. So I think they, they do a great job of taking the, the game on social media. I, I have to on social media, I love that I can go on Instagram and see what's going on. I love the ways you with the neighbors, I'm just supposed to excuse me for that, okay? Okay, that's, that's.
Ms. Brown?
I think you mentioned things really clearly, you, you were more pointed out, you know, having this severe timeline. That's not how much time people have to speak, video problem. That was standard from two minutes to three minutes. Um, and yet it's still constrained because you guys don't figure out any topic that's on the current agenda. So therein lies, you have another problem that kind of stands in the way of communication between the citizens and the city council. Um, as far as the city council putting a word out to the citizens, you know, I read, in fact, I just sent an email, a message about a typo that my mom sliced today. I read it, I saw the typo and sent it into chat so that she could get it fixed. Um, it is a great way to children, see everything that's out on. I think that's a wonderful way of putting word out. How do you get the word back? That's the. For having a printed news takeover would really help if it was going out. We don't have that, you've got the citizens dot com. So you need to do more information on there too. Um, as far as this information coming back to the council? Surveys. Surveys are hard to do. So that's, you know, planning, you know, like, oh, getting people to do the surveys and they're confusing. So it's a two-way street. We have to explore better ways of getting our proper city council out of the system. And better ways that the citizens can tell the city council what they do want and what they don't want. Only for.
Okay, Ms. Brown? So about, um, I think the city that they improved in its communications. With that being said, um, one thing I think we need to consider is the calendars of moms and dads for your kids. Six-thirty, my daughter's eating. At seven o'clock, her mom read her book, we're doing prayers and she's in bed. We need to consider looking at dinner times throughout the day so that families, friends, and children have a seat at the table. Right now, we do not have a seat at the table. So again, that's something that I don't think is intentional. I think it's more of, that's kind of how we've always done it. Uh, I was talking to someone the other day that went to July Fourth parade for the first time. He said, I am no champion for Peachtree City. He's allowed him to parade. He said, why aren't they gay? Why don't you guys get in games? One, nobody's a council to get this nomination. So, um, from my perspective, um, as a guy who works a day job, uh, a wife who takes care of the home and, 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 um, volunteers for schools, we should be considering, uh, our time so we can, you know, we show up and impact. Ms. Brown?
This is maybe a point, um, one of the things is that I really want interest in all people, I want to, if I can see councils, this is, I just, I just, I just. Uh, I thought city council, maybe everyone's all having a Saturday meeting or have a snack and try this before. It's not that I'm saying it's an easy overview or something, but I think the city council is trying very hard in the city, um, council, the mayor. I think their communication has really, really ramped up in what they've been trying to do in surveys and how they execute surveys and how they extrapolate their information. They brought on a communication individual who's working with social media, is that just the white former? Whether he might have not, that's sort of the world, is he interested in it? You don't have a printed newspaper anymore, they're just starting with what you're going to use. But one of the habits so long has not appeared in ours, people do things online. People do need different, maybe somebody can shed, maybe you can get that on the series that brand out. It's nice to people who are on, um, the online, the email. So there's lots of video, I think that they're showing well, but what I would like to do, I can see this is really interesting. And just, you know, listen to something that they said. Uh, and maybe there's times things that they can do differently. I like the fact that she can bring in Suzanne. Where was on the city council meeting? Well, I was watching it. It's like we said, it flipped out, it's my anniversary, I was maybe committed, it's my husband, it was everybody that I strong on, and that's something that we're able to do. Councilman and I would be up there, but you flash it and it's kind of interesting, it's kind of fireworks. Uh, I mean, chicken toss fireworks, Suzanne is a really good person to watch. But I think you're doing your right job and that's a good question, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Brown, we're talking about, you know, industrial businesses, small businesses, more. What do you think our city government can do specifically to help attract and retain those large corporations? As well as helping our small businesses in Peachtree City? So what can our city council do specifically to attract the large businesses as well as they hear of our small business? Ms. Brown? The first thing we need to do is let someone in city council that does that every day for a living. So in my personal view, we may not make it our priority to reach out to small businesses. As you mentioned, I missed this earlier. So there's a lot of new cities, all integrity fusion, you know, everything is Doug Yelkey. I met Doug fifteen years ago. Not long after he just knew his business out his garage. Uh, Doug then knew the warehouse in Fayetteville. I helped Doug with capital to do Peachtree City. I helped him with lots of credits, hired people to build inventory. Two years ago, Doug made a community say, hey, they got a big proposition. I want to move my manufacturing back from China, you know, we need that. We brought, Doug brought a hundred jobs to Peachtree City from Austin, um, that were not here and they're good jobs. And it did those jobs. He had to build a hundred thousand square foot building. He had to buy new equipment. It takes people that understand how to work with small business. I'm not talking about Fortune five hundred companies. I'm talking about business owners first and second generation. And we have to understand what their needs are and we have to care. Ms. Brown?
Well, we recently just had a Bay County accountant drive it to a prison station, this council meeting. One of the very successful ways that we can develop our marketing industrial and commercial growth and expansion is to work closely with them because they have access to grants and other things that we individually don't necessarily have access to. Um, and I know specifically several of the companies that are already located in Peachtree City that want to expand, but they don't have enough square footage in any of the available properties in order to be expansion. So that brings up something we talked about before, which is annexation for the purposes of industrial growth and expansion. When a company sends to you, we want this, they said, we want to stay here. We want to build two or three more facilities, or we don't have land where we can do that. We need to send you to help them. We don't want them to go to someplace else. But if we here in Peachtree City, if we can't do that ourselves, I can do this. Then the Bay County Development Authority can help us. It would be possible, like we're doing the anti-city store that you're running in Peachtree. I think that's a valuable resource. I'm looking forward to looking with it, finding dead ends to do that with us. Help us bring the industrial base to a higher level. We need, they need, they bring jobs, they bring tax relief, they bring all kinds of benefits to us. When we work here, my son works at TV here. When we work here in town, we all have very farming fields. That's a thing you need to mind. Is there a back there?
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I would say man is fun and is the rare case. Because when it comes to the work play community, Peachtree City is more than play and not so much work. I've spoken to the, the vacancy that we had, that I have granted, it's, it's all complex, but I've emptied it till last year and you have people who are at homes in the office, who are there to get a good job in there. Um, so I think it is, it is vital that we build good relationships. Be get a stakeholder to the room and be willing to work together to find a solution. I sat down with the mayor and she was telling me how she worked with Ken Coe and how often she visits them, they're the owner of the, the Great Land Shopping Center. And what she's doing to create new businesses, I would very, I would feel. Thank you too. That was most Peachtree City office, it was super tall. He said, I'll possibly be at Peachtree City. And I, that just presented so much for me. I want to be Peachtree City's biggest cheerleader. I want everyone to know that this is where you want to handle your business. This is where you want to run your family. This is where you want to raise your family. We have such great equality of life here, we have a fence wall. This is where everyone's body, so it ultimately means you're reaching out and building these relationships to follow through the really public. Committee and is.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Just coming back to the process about the biggest challenge, um, I have a balance. Yeah, on one hand, they, we're work, play, we are. Because you have to bring in a balance. You can't have the law in city council and always just trying to notice everything, know that everything without open minds. Not going to help attract businesses. What people don't realize is we're not having hearts in retaining what we have. And it's easy to have with service and say, that some of the individuals that I'm, you know, respond and know that area and we don't want to pay and we don't want any more than this, we don't want this, we don't want that because they have to have. To attract people. Actually, we have a very, very, very low velocity rate when it comes to our offices. We do have some of the larger offices that are like Handmark and Sunmark. Those are working, oh, we don't just want any, any go to the city council who are going to be able to talk and merger to us individuals to work with city councils, friend them in. And to them, I'm looking to find out right now. The Bay County Development Authority is really getting it done. We, Peachtree City Development. I text on my phone and they're not capable of doing that. They don't want the city, they don't want, they don't have their side. We can bring, we can slap, to, to have that, so we can get the growth. So we have, uh, city older individuals, so you're moving. How Bay County and Bay County are really, really good and are adminutively, this new stuff, I would find. What we need to do is listen and get our, look at people there, develop. So we have places to be able to lead lots.
Yes, we're going to have our closing comments. I'm perfect. Thank you so much for your attentiveness. I didn't hear anybody else go down earlier when we talked about offering, so thank you back. Um you know, uh we're presenting for our closing comments. And give us a couple of minutes, so we can get the candidates down to their table and then we can be uh once again, going and thanking uh George Miller, Pete Supreme. Well, Paul, there was really a deep spin something. It doesn't take a lot of behind the scenes effort and uh the team has done a great job tonight. I think for the recording this, it's going to be available someplace.
Someplace.
Yeah. We also, uh we're gonna post this, and you can uh send your friends and family, uh to thank you for this also. Once again, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank y'all for stepping out. It's, it's not easy. And so thank you for uh your ability to step out and uh your desire to serve our communities. Thank you for so much. And with that, you'll leave that agreement for closing comments. And we'll go to Mr. Brown.
As long as conservatives, citizens, I mean, the last serving out here is that I've been attending in person, and I realize that that's an advantage a lot of people don't have. But I've been attending in person a lot of city council meetings, as well as other meetings. But I don't just go and sit there. I do a lot of research. I read the agendas. I go through everything. And then I see about the things that I think people need to speak about. And in two and a half years, I've just three city council meetings. Think about that. I had COVID. I thought of that then. So I don't just choose to sit and block it. I go. I'm there. I'm engaged. I do my research. I read the ordinances, I read the agenda and go from there. And I think that that's the kind of dedication as a citizen that I've demonstrated, that I'm willing to take that as a council, as a city council member. I'm not gonna just put it on the council, operating the agendas, operating the processes. But things are only agenda. Sometimes I get some of my friends, well, we're not just most effective citizens. And we ask them, are you aware of this? Do you want to come and see? And tell them what they can do to help relative to this for the city council, not to break their issues to the city council. That's a level of citizen dedication that I've not seen anybody else doing. And that's what I bring to the table. I bring hard work, dedication, a lot of research, and determination to have a positive impact. And I think that that's one of the things that I bring. I love Peachtree City. I moved here four years ago by choice. Some people came here because their parents are over here. And I, and I love that, that they stay because this place is a wonderful place. And my daughter and some of my grandchildren moved here. I made conscious choice to sell my house and deal with that connection. Or they moved here because they knew how social life was, wanted to save. So if I had a birth to people, I'm willing to do that job and fly around and do that.
I do owe a head of gratitude to my parents for operating as a citizen of a state. I would, so we did choose um that. I lived in Peachtree City twenty-six years, uh I didn't know you. And we did, we did choose Peachtree. Um thank you again, everybody. I, I want you to know that I would be accessible and the and council will answer you. Um you can find important information about me on my website. I have a website, I have a Facebook page. I have Instagram, I post on Twitter, right here for me. I want to be accessible to you as possible, so if you're reaching out to me, I will try to answer my emails as quickly as I possibly can. And my thing that I want to be someone that you reach out to and I will do my best to communicate with you. And with with this and um with my website, and I just, and that was published in the paper, you know, there's no question where I stand on it. I choose. I'm not um as far as the Toronto risk to money, I'm not a whole people that do this money because it's so amazing. It's not a lot. You're doing this because you love Peachtree City and um I when it comes to me personally, I am running to represent families. When I'm talking about facilities and reports, I'm all about her. She wants to park, all these parks. So I am there and I'm seeing what this city has, how can we improve. When you're talking about the traffic, I do, I am there every day in the carpool line. I see the traffic. I just go downstairs. I walk through the lane. I have a constant that for, for it. Um when you're talking about safety, I have an older father who is on this path every single day. I have a teenage daughter, she's all her school every day. Safety, that would be my priority for me. I've been here, not because on this supposed to move those things here because I want this Peachtree City. I was always trying to set that down, that I'm I come into it, not one thing I know every name. I um I definitely don't, but I love to learn and I, I feel that even when I've done surveys, that I will continue to learn and to help those who come behind me. Um I hope that I can inhale under support. If you have questions for me afterwards, I would love to meet you over at my booth and be with you on the next thing.
Thank you again to Pastor putting a plan for that I was a reverend meeting for the first time a couple of months and they're guiding us, sorry, this is the truth. They're all concerned. We'll build goodwill and build friendships. Their guidance will be beneficial to all concerned. And you know, the reason why I'm running is on my conscience, I definitely can follow these side of the principles. And this, I've got every couple of years to be a serial office speaker and expect the same results. You result oriented individual on the city council. You have people with experience. You have people that enforce their own paths and not align themselves with individuals who may not have these ten greater businesses. I have my five villages that I'm thinking about and I'm talking about and that's on my, on my list. Ages, all these um work particularly valued in Vegas, so broad market actions, I've talked about that. Our current volunteer all the two still really fit in the line anymore. We need to have more volunteer committees, not just planning permission, uh the hotel, um the recognition. We need to uh really enhance, add a soft business commitment, that we have our level, level you can make a strong cultural presence. Yeah, I had an opportunity to talk about that. I think now with our budget, it's balanced. Maybe just to let talk um just dammit a little bit, get toward that for the fact that going all to enhancing for seventy-four, we're gonna produce itself, start on time for this term, we can afford our revenue at almost zero. There should be more, more uh world class. Our uh we should have, from our center. Who are been uh this, this, that, not like maybe it was probably a bit over the words, say, it would be black, then it's on, we should um all of our cities. Now we have all of our cities, which always look at, or our children, this is a town of four thousand people. We're not gonna be able to do that. We have to deal with what we have. There needs to be lives that are on all our um situations. Um we need to have some time, that's something that the, that I want to try to go on, let's enhance, we have this group where we want to see our parents, all those words, our, and they, or it's community, um it would be good to see you so.
Once again, I want to thank the Rotary as I live in this crowd. You're good at being asked, do you think they run the city council? I would probably say no. Um I've had a day job, I'm a soccer coach, bringing the family, actively involved in my church. Um but when I went to city council to represent Eric of Planchera, those are the, I, I got engaged because my daughter was eight, she was five, women's and five, I was fifteen, thank you, Ellen. Very dark, dark, no eyes. I was with her, I grabbed her, we went down the hill, we definitely did it by mail, I was. That day changed my life. The very next morning, I demanded a meeting with then city manager John Corey. Uh we reached a board, we talked with all the existing city council members here. I demanded a meeting with each other one. Um I galvanized to a group of parents. We build relationships, we build relationships with the city council. And two years later, we ultimately came up with this. So there are these two things. Generally, it's working together by common ground. So to me, um that's just one example of how I plan to lead, I'm elected to city council. One other thing too, listen, I, I work for a company with my job as part of it. Live anywhere I want to live. Where I moved here, I visited the northern suburbs, visited Peachtree, chose to live here because of all the great things that we've talked about. And while there's some that like to fear monitor and create alarmism, I am bullish on Peachtree City. I think it's a fantastic place to live. I want to preserve all the great things about Peachtree City. I want to, I want to focus on smart, pro-smart redevelopment of old dilapidated buildings. These visions under these sports, they don't need criticism, they need Again, I'm the only one on this stage at city council outside of Mr. Creekport that's creating jobs. That's what I do, that's what I love to do. I humbly ask for your support for your votes uh this upcoming election. I agree additional information, this is my website, if you have some information back or on Facebook page.
You're a holy prophet, sir. Uh I'm here at our city council. Thanks for being here this evening. Uh thanks to all our engaged citizens for being here. Uh you're all here for centuries. We love our city. We want to see it continue to thrive and do great things. And while they're heading out, I want to turn them on now.